Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, February 5th, 2018 City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Condon, here. Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Mehavick.
Here.
Alderman Sante.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
All present, ma'am.
Thank you. Please stand up and pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to speak on behalf of the consent agenda or items that are not on the individual action items? I see none. Moving on to the next item, consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, 5A through 5J. Alderman Glad?
Do you have, like, D polled, please?
D isn't done?
D is a done.
Thank you. Any other items that you'd like to poll?
No. Take the motion for the rest of them. So, D, A through C, and G through whatever.
Sure. Second to that motion, Alderman Curry?
I'll second.
Any discussion on those items? Alderman Curry?
Questions for clarification, I think I read it right. The lease, item F, that's a, so, there's not an opt out, it's a when you're term, is that correct?
For Maria?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're just...
It's a when you were the second year option.
There's no, for either side, there's no, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Mehavick?
Yes.
Alderman Sante?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The item that was pulled was 5D. We'll go ahead and start it off with discussion. Mayor's execution of an agreement with the Chesapeake Hills condominiums and McHenry association, accepting water and sanitary sewer mains within 10 feet easements, 10-foot easements located in this subdivision. At this time, I'll open up the discussion by council. Alderman Glad?
My first question, John Schmidt, is whatever we look at as far as the sewers out there, if we got cameras that were put in there?
We have not been on-site cameraing or televising. My understanding that for the last almost 30 years, that Chesapeake Hills Homeowners Association has done all the maintenance on both of the sanitary sewer and water mains.
Well, I'll tell you, a lot of the reservations I have, number one, is we're talking about conveyance of something that we have no clue of what kind of condition they are, all we can do is go by what they say they've done. So now I find that, we, staff hasn't even looked at that. You look at where those lines are, and it's talking about a 10-foot easement, trade easement, or whatever kind of power, well, it wouldn't be a power, but an easement for the lines, but yet, some of those would be within four or five feet of foundations that you'd be digging. Puts a liability on us if we ever have to dig any of that up as far as being as close to the, so I would think that we would need the association to sign off on something on that. I really feel that the first thing we need to do before anything, before we accept this, is we need to know what kind of condition those are, and we need to review it, to have our staff review it, send some cameras through there. I mean, you do that on all our sewers throughout the city as far as scanning to see what's there. I don't want it to be like what would happen at the hospital where we took over the roads and three years later, we're paid. And I know that the intent, when they got the permit for putting these lines in, that the city was going to accept them, evidently, I mean, you just take a look at the way they're laid out, and they're nowhere near what the city would have expected in the specs, and that's why they probably weren't accepted at that time by the city. And 30 years later, it's, nothing's changed, except for technology, and now we're able to look at them a little bit closer and a little bit better. I don't want to be taking something over that we have to wind up having, you know, Public Works take and pay for repairs or whatever. Those sewer lines are 30 years old. What kind of maintenance has been done to them or whatever? I mean, even, we maintain our sewers, and yet, there's still, after 30 or 40 years, maintenance and sometimes repairs that have to be done. I take a look at, part of it goes through, I believe, under a couple of the roadways. It goes through a lot of their driveways, you know, I imagine if we've got to tear that up, then we're the ones that are going to be stuck up the building to repair those driveways and everything else. And I think to some extent, what we should do first is we ought to scan those sewers, we ought to see what we're talking about, and then I think it should go to Public Works for discussion after we see it and iron it out before we bring it to council. And I'd make a motion that we pull this from the agenda and that we send it to Public Works after a visual has been done by staff.
Do I have a second to that motion?
That was a motion. I'll second it when we can discuss it.
Alderman Curry for the second. At this time, there's some members from Chesapeake Hills, John LaSalle?
Saul.
Saul, also Judy Walter and Cass Kapler. Would either of you like to speak? If you do so, can you please come to the podium?
Sure. Thank you, your honor, gentlemen. Yes, it's true that the association has had sewers that have been in water that's been in place for a long time. However, at the very beginning, when the subdivision was put together, there was some agreement made between the developer and also the city, on which both sides have signed off, to indicate that these sewers and water lines would be maintained primarily by us. That's changed. We've looked over time. We've, our association has been in place since the 1996 era, and it's been built in two different sections, and so we have some of the sewers that go back to 1996 and perhaps slightly earlier than that. But we've done quite a bit of work with Mr. Schmidt and his organization, his staff that's been out there a number of times, I think. And I'm not certain what kind of research had been done on it, but the question I pose is that how old are these sewer lines and water lines compared to some of the other ones that are here in the city that have been handled for many, many years by Mr. Schmidt's organization? I think that's a fair question. Another fair question is, what about the half million dollars that we've paid for water and sewer over the course of time? What are we getting for that? I think the question here is one of fairness. So, I ask you to consider this very, very strongly. I think Mr. Schmidt and his staff have indicated that they are on top of the problems and would like to do whatever they can to be able to make sure this is agreeable to both sides. So, I am asking you to vote in favor of letting us go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Would you like to say anything? Judy, Cass, no? Okay. Open up the discussion from council. Alderman Schaefer?
Under this previous agreement, I assume the association has been collecting fees from those members also for, at least since 1996, it wasn't just payment to the city. So, I'm assuming, is there any financial part that's part of this new agreement? Meaning, they've been paying fees through their association for, since 1996, correct? So, they didn't have to pay for any of their own infrastructure?
I think the question is, so, really is back to Mr. Saul, and that's probably, so, are there dues that are assessed to the association members for the maintenance of water and sewer utilities on your side?
The water and sewer are paid collectively for the entire 24 units in the subdivision.
But nothing's paid the ought to the city?
Right, so the answer is yes, there are fees collected for your infrastructure.
But also, I'd like to point out that the maintenance of the sewer, sewer water lines on private, on our property are like everywhere else. Those are borne by the unit holders and not by the association.
So, in other words, if there's a problem with the piping that's on the property of the owner, the owner is responsible for maintaining that. When it connects with the public, that's what we're asking for you folks to be able to take over.
So, have we been maintaining those?
We have not.
Okay, so...
Well, I shouldn't say 100% we have not. We have flushed the fire hydrants up there because of concern of water quality. We have, they are part of our hybrid flushing program.
So, I guess my question is, the homeowner's part is from the main to the house.
All right.
Who's been paying for, there's no fees or dues, you've done no maintenance on the section that hasn't been?
No, there's been no fee that's been charged specifically for that. However, it would be a matter of something that would be settled from the general reserves of the association. There's money that's put aside for certain things of this type that might happen. And fortunately, it has not happened up to this point.
Okay.
Director Schmidt? It's my understanding, Alderman Schaefer, that, like any other homeowners' association, they collect monthly dues to pay for maintenance of the roads, the storm sewer, the streetlights, and in this case, in this subdivision's case, it also covered the water and sanitary sewer main maintenance. I know that in the past, there has been a couple of water service leaks up there that we hadn't gotten called on, but we turned over to the association, and they did pay and have that fixed. But like I say, it's, subdivision's a little different than any other ones. And then you asked about the original cost of installing the infrastructure of the water and sanitary sewer main, and I'm sure it was built in the cost of their properties that they purchased.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a couple of questions. In our packet, it indicates that the IEDA construction permits, state, City of McHenry agrees to accept ownership of the water and sanitary sewer mains upon completion of the project, which I assume was completed way back, at least by '96, right, when the buildup was done. So, is that, first of all, I guess that's correct? We actually have the city signed off on that?
That is correct. As I started researching this, I found the construction permits, there's two separate permits. There's one for the water main construction and one for the sanitary sewer main construction that's submitted to the Illinois EPA on behalf of the developer, signed off from the city. And there's a portion of that that the city signs and says after construction is completed, the city agrees to take ownership and maintain the system. I don't know what happened, why it didn't get turned over to City of McHenry, instead it got turned over to the HOA, it appears. I did find that there was review comments from the city on the construction of the water and sanitary sewer mains. I also found a punch list that was created to repair any deficiencies prior to acceptance, and I can't find anything other than that.
So, the punch list was a city punch list?
Yeah, it was a punch list that city staff went through, and let's say there was a valve box or a water shut off that wasn't keyable, or if there was a valve box that was a keyable, that was noted and repaired.
Did that include the general construction of the lines, then? I mean, are they constructed? As far as you know, are they constructed to the standards that we would normally utilize?
Yes, they were. In fact, Alderman Glad brought up that some of the water lines are behind the properties, and we require, it's a city requirement, to loop a system. And when I saw that that system was looped, it kind of raised a red flag right away that that was a comment that we made, because if a developer went in, they could care less about looping a system, they would have left it at that end. And that's when I started researching it some more.
Okay, and I guess, thinking about one of the questions that Alderman Glad had, it looks, of course, this isn't a diagram, you know, I can't get measurements on, but it does look like that some of these lines might be really close to the building foundations. And if we're talking about, plus, we're talking about a, is that normal? I'll ask two questions. The other question is, five-foot either side easement, is that enough to dig up, I mean, you only got five feet, either side, so?
Yes, you know, our easement's very, you know, from place to place, and I'm confident with a 10-foot easement there. Do we have water and sewer lines close to foundation lines or foundations? Yes, we do. Is it an ideal situation? No.
Do we have other areas of the city that are like that?
Yes, we have other areas that are like that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman, time?
So, the IEDA permits were signed by the city, that?
Correct. You know, additionally, not only signed by the city, but there was another portion of that permit that was signed and said that we accept ownership and responsibility after construction.
Alderman, time?
I'd like to make a motion to have it accepted.
There's already a motion. We'll go through that motion first.
Yeah, you know, my intent is not to send them away and not accept them. My intent is to make sure and ensure that the city has held them all liabilities. And again, I will mention the streets and the fact that three years later, we wound up paving them, and that took money away from other cities' residential streets that we could have used that money in. The same thing could happen here. I mean, needless to say, if there is some major problems that would have to be rectified, then it's the city that's on the book before we even look at them, and we just take them in, and it's the water users that are, wind up having to pay for that. All I'm saying is, we should, number one, we should know what we're accepting. So, we need to get in there, and we need to send the camera through the sewers, make sure that, you know, everything's where it needs, what it needs to be. Needless to say, the lines are not where the city would normally expect them to be put up in a subdivision. I did go out on the county website and look it up and looked at Sid Wells, and I can tell you right now that some of those buildings are less than 50 feet from the roadway, with the line going in between, or the lines going in between the building and the roadway, which means that they have to be within, just with a 10-foot easement, you're either right up against the roadway, you're right up against the foundation, one or the other. I don't know if there's any property lines. I noticed there were some lines on the Sidwell as far as delineating where the roadway is and then where the lots were. Now, the lots are still part of the common area outside of the buildings, just like the break, so that's also by the association. But again, you know, do we need any kind of legalities as far as sign offs on work being done? I mean, we're talking, we had some major problems with some of those sewers. We're talking about ripping up the roads on some of that, because some of that runs across the roads. And again, my elevation even more so than the roads, is the fact that it's so close to some foundations that we want to take the liability of that all on our toes. You know, if something has to be dug up and those lines wind up to be two or three feet of a foundation, are we going to, you know, dig up something, repair it, pack it back down, and then if there's problems with the foundation in the future, is it going to go back to the city that, well, we dug up over there and we must have caused the problem? I think to some extent, it just needs to be looked at a lot closer, and what kind of language needs to be put in there to protect the city as a whole. And that's why I would ask that the, you know, that the staff were to get cameras and look at those sewers, and that we take it to Public Works and that everything's hammered out to protect the city, you know, as a whole, and then bring it back to council to approve it. Just that I don't think there's been enough work done on it to ensure that the city's totally protected on its.
Alderwoman Condon?
Director Schmidt, do you, at this time, without any further work, examination, do you feel comfortable accepting this?
This is how, my professional opinion, we should have accepted this almost 30 years ago. We approved the plans where they are in relationship to the road and the homes. For almost 30 years, the homeowners' association has been paying for the maintenance. And if we go in there and get televised something and find a problem, do we make the homeowners' association fix that when we should have had it? I'm not quite sure.
If we did accept it, would the next step be, so regardless whether we accept it or not, would it not be prudent to put a camera through there and make sure everything is operational, or to full capacity, or, I don't know?
Well, we, since we buy our own tele, you know, camera, we're not 100% through our own sanitary sewer system.
Okay.
So, I would put it, if we accepted it, I would put it on the list that we would televise and eventually run the lines. If it went the other way, that we weren't going to accept it until I televised it, I'd put it up on the list. But like I say, I'm not 100% through our own sanitary sewer system.
Okay, and so, with that said, then I guess it would be comparable to say that it's of the same caliber as other subdivisions and areas, it just, we haven't had the camera go through it, and it had, at the time of it being built, it was to the standards that you would have expected at the time?
Correct.
So, it's very unusual that it wouldn't have been accepted. So, I know this is a very unique situation, and while, while I certainly appreciate Alderman Glad's concerns, and I had similar due diligence concerns, after what you just said, it makes me think that, in reality, we are, I feel like it is incumbent upon me to protect all of our citizens and to best our ability, not at the sacrifice of other constituents, but certainly, but this is something that should have probably been taken over, from what you said, by the city decades ago. So, thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
Okay, so, two things that's kind of come out in this discussion. So, for 30 years or more, they have been paying something as part of their fees for the maintenance of this. With that being said, can there, I mean, the agreement can be changed to include a timeframe for the infrastructure or contingency upon review? Is that true? Something like that could be added? Is that, again, putting it something, it would be knowing what should have happened but didn't happen, but knowing what did happen, and the fact that there have been some fees or whatever collected on that, the whole burden, if something was to happen, shouldn't be totally put on the existing water and sewer people that we already have, is my opinion.
Alderman, time?
Yeah, okay. And I know some of the history of this because I know, when I first got on the council, there were a lot of discussions with Fred Bath about this property. Back in the 90s, there were two or three times that they pushed to get the city to accept the roadways, you know, and again, this might be the beginning of trying to push that in as well. Why is it that the city did not accept those utilities back then? The developer, I know, would be accepting the streets because he would build them to city specs, so that's why they wound up private. Now, how do we know that our water systems out there aren't in the same type of situation? Because we haven't looked at them. All we've done is looked at where the lines are, and we want to accept them. And we need to know, I mean, there is history, the fact that the roads weren't accepted because they weren't built to specs. So, why are we just assuming that the water and the sewer were? They weren't there when they were built. They moved in afterwards, and, you know, I mean, for years, they, you know, they were wondering why they're paying for the road upkeep, why they're not being plowed, and probably the same thing with the water and the sewer. And all I'm saying, though, is I think there needs to be some investigation, and not saying that we don't want to accept them, but we need to know what we're accepting. We need to analyze it, and we need to look at what kind of language in there needs to be put in by our attorney to protect the city to its fullest. That is being responsible, I think, to the payers of the water and sewer funds.
Alderwoman Condon?
If I understand what you were referring to, Alderman Glad, that, so the roads were not built to our city standards, but if, for clarification, Alterment Schmidt, the sewer lines were built to our specifications because we approved those before, in conjunction with the IEP agreement, correct?
Yeah, the water and sewer lines were built to our specs.
Okay.
It was in the permit, and we did a review of the plans, and like I said, we did a punch list. And we know, we researched the roads, Alderman Glad's correct, the roads were not built to city specs. And it was that intention from day one, when the developer came to the City of McHenry, I'm looking back through all the anticipation agreement and stuff, that they were housing private rooms, and storm sewer and streetlights. I agree with that.
Okay, but the storm water and the sanitary, were built to our specifications or were not?
The storm goes with the roadway, so that's not what we're talking about accepting tonight. I'm not recommending we would accept the storm, the roadway, or the streetlights.
Okay, just the water mains?
Water main and sanitary sewer.
Oh, sanitary sewer. I'm sorry, I, yeah, okay. And both of those were built to our specifications?
Yes, I...
At that time? At that time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to bring it back to staff to do some... Okay, so the motion on the floor is to bring it back to staff to do some homework on this and bring it back to Public Works Committee. A motion by Alderman Glab and then seconded by Alderman Curry. This time, I'm going to ask, please call the roll.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
No.
Alderman Devine?
No.
Alderman Mahavik?
No.
Alderman Santee?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
It's four, two, three.
Thank you, Council.
Motion fails.
I, at this time, confirm mayor's execution of an agreement with the Chesapeake condominiums of McHenry Association accepting water and sanitary sewer mains within ten-foot easements located in the subdivision. Alderman Devine?
Please make that motion as presented.
Second. Alderman Condon?
Second.
Clerk, please call. Discussion on this item? Alderman Santee?
From what I've listened to, if, let me ask our attorney, Cardinal, can we place into this motion a timeframe where we can give our people a chance to review the system, make sure it's at whatever standard capabilities it needs to be at? You know, to place that on the motion in regards to, we can review it.
That's the same as tableting. If you're going to do that, we table it, otherwise you have to have standards in the motion of, you know, at what point, what condition does the pipes, do the pipes have to actually be in in order to accept it? That would be difficult to articulate right now. So that probably isn't the right condition to put in there. I mean, you can condition on the staff's review, but so what? When they review it, what are they supposed to do at that point? There's no stand, you know, you're not giving them a goal to me. And you can't, don't get me wrong, it's just, that'd be difficult to do. So I think that was along the line of Alderman Glab's motion, actually.
That's, that's what I was understanding, that it could have been.
Right.
Any other discussion? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to say, you know, I feel for what the situation is here and I think that we should take it in because apparently, in the past, we did agree to do that. But I also think that we should go in eyes open and just know what we got, you know, up front. So I guess that's, you know, I'm actually, I'm actually for taking it in, but I'm maybe not for doing it today.
Any others? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I mean, I know I made a motion for city staff to bring it back to committee. If this motion fails, I think I would just like to see it to where at least it's reviewed a little bit better and brought back to the council with a little bit more teeth in it than what I see right now.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
No.
Thank you, Council. I just want to go back and when I made the first motion to approve the consent agenda, I want to make sure it was A through O. So I just want to make sure that, I thought maybe I said something.
Was that the intent of, it seemed like the intent of Alderman Glab is everybody agreed that they voted on all items except for D.
D, correct.
Now we, okay. And you have that down, Marcy?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, just wanted to verify. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the individual action item, discussion to approve Class A two dash three liquor license transfer from Channel Lakes Brewing Company to McHenry Brewing Company, DBA McHenry Brewing Company located at 3425 Pearl Street. We do have the applicant here this evening, Bob Master. At this time, I'll pass it over to, I just pretty much did it, so. Someone pass it over to the city administrator. I did, I did meet with Bob Master this morning. He is familiar with the business, he's worked there for a few years. I think the things that he's changing there is positive for the city and I look forward to having him open this facility up in, near the St. Patrick's Day timeframe. So is there any discussion by council, any questions for the applicant at this time? I see none. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. At this time, looking for a motion to approve a Class A two dash three liquor license transfer from Channel Lakes Brewing Company to McHenry Brewing Company, DBA McHenry Brewing Company located at 3425 Pearl Street. Alderman Schaefer?
Make that motion as you just presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Curry?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion to approve a resolution establishing honorary street dedications at the intersection of Pearl Street and Park Street as honorary Susan Elah Way as recommended by Public Works Committee. At this time, is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Schaefer?
I just said, the discussion, how many did we have for this year to approve? Were we limited or?
Yep, we could have approved three this year, but with our new policy, we reviewed them a year prior in the first quarter of 2018 and we only had two locked from 2017.
Okay, so these are the, the only two for this year. We could still accept a third?
Well, our policy says, no, we're done for this year, but we're accepting applications throughout the first quarter of 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. At this time, I am looking for a motion to approve a resolution establishing honorary street dedications at the intersection of Pearl Street and Park Street as honorary Susan Elah Way as recommended by Public Works Committee. Alderwoman Condon?
I would make the motion as just presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Schaefer? Discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The next item on the agenda is discussion to approve a resolution establishing honorary street dedications at the intersection of Center Street and Grove Avenue as honorary Leroy J. Welter Way as recommended by Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion on this item? See none. Turn it to the public, is there any public comment regarding this item? I see none. Looking for a motion to approve a resolution honorary street dedications at the intersection of Center Street and Grove Avenue as honorary Leroy J. Welter Way as recommended by the Public Works Committee. Alderman Santee?
Make that motion designate the intersection of Center and Grove Avenue as Leroy J. Welter Way as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Curry?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Council. The next item on the agenda, I'm going to open it up for discussion, but I'll go ahead and, and need this, this long motion here is to, discussion, one, temporary use permit to allow a forty-foot by hundred-foot tent at 1202 Riverside Drive, Miller Point, and live music on Saturday, March 17th and on Sunday, March 18th. Two, special event liquor license of the sale of beer, wine and malt beverages. Three, permit open carry of alcoholic beverages in plastic cups throughout Green Street and Riverside Drive areas. Four, closure of certain sections of Green Street, Pearl Street and Riverside Drive from 11:45 a.m. to approximately 1 p.m. for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Five, closure of Pearl Street from Riverside Drive to River Road from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. during the dying of the Fox River. And six, tourism funds, tourism fund budget amendment not to exceed 25,000 for the McHenry Shamrocks, the Fox event. At this time, I'll turn it over to Director Hobson to explain, I guess, a little bit more.
I tried to make that motion as long as possible. This is just, you know, we've talked a lot about it at prior council meetings, this is an exciting opportunity for us as a city that fits right in line with our strategic plan that was developed in 2013 and then reviewed and updated in 2016. That being particularly to take advantage of the Fox River as well as to develop and work with outside organizations for events. It really builds off two existing events that we have right now, the Shamrock Shuffle run by the Kiwanis Club as well as the Salute to Volunteers St. Patrick's Day Parade, which was started by the Rotary Club and now run by the Downtown Business Association. The adding of events and creating that atmosphere that will draw families to the city of McHenry and then obviously that families will turn into more of an entertainment type event, which is right in line with what we do downtown. We have a number of entertainment options that we think this fits well with. And that was part of the, part of the idea of creating that open container carry to get people to not only come downtown, but then to migrate throughout downtown, creating what we already have in a number of, a number of times this, throughout the year, is a taste of downtown, to have some specials, whether that's shops or whether that's food specials, drink specials, those type of things. We want people to migrate throughout our downtown. We want to access people that maybe haven't been here before in partnering with a business that is extremely well-known and has a large summer offering, but isn't open this time of year. So by partnering with them and their expertise, we feel it puts us in the best position to succeed in an event like this, as well as to create an atmosphere that all of our businesses can succeed. I'll be happy to answer any questions, I won't go any farther than that and I think we have talked about this a lot, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
At this time, I will look up the council, are there any questions, discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just, first of all, just comment, I did talk to a few of the restaurant bar owners in town. There are, there are some concerns and I think, or perhaps he's aware of those concerns, but I think generally what I, what I found was, for the most part, positive. In some cases, very positive, in some cases, just concerns that I was going to go and I think you've probably talked to some of those same, pretty same people. I guess the, one thing I'm wondering about is I see on here, we have, you know, businesses can sponsor, you know, at a cost, obviously. I guess the question I would have is, is there any plan to somehow promote the other common venues, if you will, at the site outside of somebody paying a thousand dollars for a sponsorship?
Absolutely, and that was one of the conversations I had with one specific bar owner about trying to get people to move and what can, how can we advertise? What's the best advertisement that would serve him in that maybe event central tent? Is it a banner? Is it a punch card that we can get, that people can, so they go and check off and maybe come back and they get a free t-shirt or whatever that, whatever that promotion happens to be? That's an opportunity that I asked this particular individual to help me develop. You know, there's some of these things, a lot of the details, that until we, until we finalize it on the council and have actually event approval, then we need some of these things to start to fall into place. It was, it was hard to put a lot of those details in place on a first-year event and I understand that and I certainly understand the concerns of a couple of the business owners that I did talk to. I just want the opportunity to be able to work with them and I think they understand that. But to your direct question, there are going to be opportunities aside from just those sponsorships. That was a draft sponsorship, really based off of yesterday's sponsorship. But yes, there will be opportunities in there.
Can you, can you describe what that might be?
That's what I want to, I want to go back to him and say, what, what best serves you? Is it a banner? My, for me, I see a banner that advertises a drink special or advertises maybe what entertainment he might have in his establishment that evening to say, if you want, if you don't like this band, go to this location to see Bagpipers or here's his event schedule, something along that lines. Maybe it's a two-foot by four-foot banner.
Okay, so do we, you say you've talked to a few, but I mean, do we have a plan then to reach out to all of them?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, so that they can have the opportunity to do that. Because I think that's important, because I know some of the concerns were all going to be in one spot, you know, which I don't think is true, but then it is, you know, you're going to provide entertainment at this Miller Point and so it's like, how do they know I exist? You know, because you are talking, some people might think that's funny, but you're, if it works, you're talking about bringing people in from, that aren't from McHenry. I mean, they may be close by, but they might not know the various businesses in town. So I think it's important that we somehow help promote that.
And that's where I think, you know, we've already talked to, and I think we've already talked to the Downtown Business Association to see, maybe we can distribute a map. When we do the Christmas walk, there is a map that highlights certain businesses that have those specials, but it also gives a lay of the land and calls those businesses out. So partnering with the key people throughout downtown to make sure that this works for them is really vital.
I notice we just changed the tines a bit after the last discussion, is that correct?
We did.
Yeah, okay, so this, this kind of matches the times of yesterday's?
Yes, sir.
And I know there's still some concerns about it, probably even this, but I'm going to, I'm going to yield the floor at this point for others.
Thank you. Alderman Condon?
I think this is exactly the type of event that really can bring the community together and really is bringing the community together already. I have, was a part of the McHenry Character Counts Coalition when St. Baldur's was first initiated in McHenry and as a community event that has grown beyond our expectations. And so we already have worldwide recognition for that. And so adding this into it, the parade had already existed, the run existed and now adding a full-blown event with the dying of the river, I hear people talking about this in the community and people are excited and I think Alderman Curry's points were well-taken. I mean, we do want to make sure that our businesses, large and small, have some benefit of that, so reaching out to all of them and who want to have some recognition, I think, is appropriate. And again, I love the fact that this is an event that is, is being coordinated not just by the city or the chamber, but, but, you know, the community as at large and really all of us coming together to potentially have a really remarkable, remarkable event. So glad to see it moving forward.
It is a bit of a change with us taking the lead, so that's been, I wouldn't say unusual, but it's a different role for us. But the partners that have stepped up to be part of this have really been amazing, whether that's the Downtown Business Association, the Kiwanis Club, Visit McHenry County as a countywide organization has really embraced this, our own staff as well as, there's just been a number of people that have stepped up to really make this happen.
Thank you. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I was just going to say that with this event, what it's going to do is it's going to signal the fact that what we're creating our downtown areas to be is a party of recreation type atmosphere, not a storefront type downtown as you see in some, which isn't all bad. I mean, you take a look at what East Dundee is doing out there. Unfortunately, we don't have a multi-multi-millionaire that's investing in the properties and tearing building down to building parking and everything else. Exactly. But what I'm getting at is, is this is not going to be for the average resident in the city of McHenry. There will be a percentage of residents that will come to this, just like yesterday's. You get a percentage. Is it good for the city? Well, when we have it and we sit back afterwards and see where we're at, we'll know. But again, I think to some extent, like I said, if, if our downtown areas are going to be more of a gathering place for these type of events... to be more of a gathering place for these type of events, so be it. I mean, it's not that bad. We do have other retail areas that we need to work on that, to get different types of businesses in for our residents. But I did have a couple of questions and one was temporary use permit to allow forty-by-a-hundred tent. Okay. Why? And is that a ordinance or something that you, you have to have a special use for a tent or?
Typically, when we, when there's a structure that doesn't exist, parcel, we have to.
For a tent?
Yes.
I mean, it's a temporary?
Yes.
Okay. What about the tent that you're showing for the kids? Is that nixed and that's not gonna be approved here or what?
That, well, that's where some of that event planning, right now, there's not event, there's not kids' events besides, besides inflatables that are in discussion.
But that was on the plan? You got it on the plan, you're showing it. So why isn't it in the motion?
We can't.
Should we add it in the motion? I mean, it's on the plan, so.
The temporary use for introduction of a tent would, in my opinion, would cover that. We call specifically out for that one tent, but by adding a tent, in my opinion, and maybe Director Polari, can they, but we're bringing the same use on. So if we added a tent, we wouldn't need a second temporary use for the same type of use that we're presenting.
Yes, you would, because you, you are showing a specific size of a tent. You're not saying a tent, you're saying a specific size of a tent. So why don't we just put it in there that, you know, for any additional tents or whatever, just so it's in there? Always, nobody can challenge you.
You know, temporary use, if I can add a strip, but temporary use permit when they're issued, they're usually, there always is a site plan and it's more, I mean, I know temporary use tent permit, right, but it's basically you're approving the site plan and all of the amenities that are on that site, not just a specific tent or whatnot. Because we look at everything, we look at parking, we look at bathrooms, we look at accessibility, you know, that, that goes through a review process and this is no doubt that we go through that review process as well, so.
Excuse me, but that is not what it says in the motion. Okay? Okay, that, that's my point. I mean, if we wanna, we wanna approve it according to the site plan, that, that's fine.
Will you change the motion? That's fine.
That's all I'm saying.
We made the motion.
But what I'm saying is, is if, if it, if it just specifically says a forty-by-a-hundred tent, then we shouldn't see other tents popping up.
So it's size.
So let's just, you know, maybe that, that word verbiage needs to be changed. Again, you know, what is the legal terms so that we have it? Now, we're talking about giving a special use permit for liquor.
First point?
Yes.
To who?
City of McHenry.
Why don't we say it's the city of McHenry? I, I don't like that it's open-ended, that we're just allowing a, you know, I mean, it could be implied, but it should specifically state that it's for the city. That's all I'm saying.
We are presenting it, that's, that's.
Rather than just implying that, I, I would feel so much more comfortable if it's directly to the city of McHenry, okay, you know? Other than that, the question I have is, is if we are serving liquor, we can give ourselves a liquor license, but do we have a state liquor license?
Contingent upon this meeting, we will acquire a state liquor license. We have to have a state liquor license in order to purchase alcohol.
Okay, because I was under the impression we did.
As well as dram shop insurance. We'll need both of those, but we need this event approval before we go down that road.
Needless to say, you can see I did some research on, on some of the legalities of liquor and all that, considering we were getting involved in that, so. One of the things that came up is, is what are we going to do to prevent people from taking and we're, we're promoting for them to grab a beer and go visit other establishments, but they can't go into another liquor establishment with another beer?
That onus will be on that particular establishment.
Okay, so in other words, the onus is on the establishment not to allow somebody to come in with, with a cup? So, right, is there any way that we can put signs up for something when we sell out the beer or something, hey, you know, come, go and visit our, however, just so that we're not promoting for them to go in there and then all of a sudden, you know, the poor bad guy, you know, the bartender at, at an establishment says you can't come in here with that. Well, the city just told me you could.
Right.
You know, and, and again, it's difficult, but there's gotta be a way that we can do it that way, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, some of those parameters, I think we could establish through, again, the condition that made a tent. If you ca, you know, if you leave the premises with this, it needs to be consumed by the time you walk into another establishment.
Well, hopefully not. We don't wanna hop in from one establishment to another with, with another beer or the, again, we wanna have a little bit of, you know, semblance of order and, you know, you can only pour so much, so. But yeah, if we could make a few of those changes in the recommendations for the motion, I feel a lot more comfortable.
So if we change that too?
Even though I'm not, well, just basically like I said.
Multiple tents rather than calling out?
Instead of the tent, just go with the, the layout as presented, that's all I'm looking at. So that it covers it all.
All right.
I mean, we've already seen it, we've had the discussion before, we're looking at it again now, so according to the site plan, it would be fine with me. I, I feel so much more comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alden McCannan?
I, I guess several things. I, I take offense that at the characterization of this being a party event, because I truly do see it as a community event. I, I see it as, is there going to be alcohol? Yes, but that doesn't make it exclusive of being a community event. And I also see stores, so if someone's walking around along the riverfront and they're hungry and seeing curious cupcakes, I, I hope she's gonna benefit from that. Or they're walking down and they see Black Orchid and, and going to a dress shop. I, I see this as bringing people into the community, walking around these areas and actually visiting some of these shops. I, I think when we talked about this in the past, I, I spoke about other communities where there's been events and, and I actually did go in and as did other people, there for an event, go into some of the community shops. So I, I, I don't see it that way. I, I know that's your opinion and I think you certainly are entitled to it, but I don't think that, that's, your opinion is not shared by everyone, certainly not me. Just so to say that it's a party event is your opinion, not mine. I, I think this really is a community event, I think that's the full intent. I don't think it is just to be a party, meaning a drinking event. I think it's to benefit our shops as well and establishments as well as anything else, not just the event itself, but to, to help our downtown. That said, having made the motion, I would, I would, I would be amenable to amending it to say the motion as one temporary use permit, including a forty-by-a-one-hundred tent and then on to including a site plan.
We have, we have to go to public discussion.
Okay.
We made a motion, yeah, when we come back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by council?
We're in discussions.
Yeah. Alden Santti?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. This, yeah, this could be a real, incredible event, and actually incredible event within the next few years, at, you know, its infancy stage, it's, this would be number one. And I did, I, I received phone calls, but then I also, you know, went knocking on a few doors and talked to a few establishments. And I got this in multiple places, so I think there's a little bit of concern there and that would appreciate, you know, council's thoughts on this. On the Saturday where it says live music from three to eleven, I, I don't know if there's a possibility of starting it earlier and maybe ending it earlier into that evening. I know of two facilities that would likely put a band in at some point in that evening at about seven or eight o'clock or, or even nine o'clock. And they're hesitant just because they have some concerns, you know, if they're gonna draw people to their establishment. And I know we'll be able to advertise and market in that, hopefully in that tented area that they know that there is going to be numerous other places for, it, it could be a food special, it could be, you know, it could be entertainment. Why not have the theater promote their last two showings of that night at eight, eight and nine o'clock where, you know, people could possibly, you know, pass, you know, go into the theater at that time? That's one, and, and be able to, you know, inform the people at Miller Point that it's, you know, music ends hypothetically at seven or eight o'clock and that does give them the option to, I mean, they could hop their car and leave, they could walk around a little bit depending on the weather, but I, I definitely see the eleven o'clock hour is probably, probably just too late to get any of that last minute or late, late arriving traffic into, and, and some of the places might be closed. I mean, like the clothing store could be closed, it will be closed at that time. I'm sure, you know, you know, other places will be closed. And that's just my thought, because I, I really look at this as something that could definitely be very, be very big in, in the upcoming years. That's all I have.
Alden Santti, just to, to your point, if you wouldn't mind, I think, because this is a discussion that I wanna share with the council as well and, and speaking to one gentleman in particular, my comments to him were that largely we're creatures of habit and I think the people that go to those, to their, to their places have their places and they're going to go there. What we're trying to do is we're trying to accentuate that. We wanna bring more people into town, maybe some unique visitors that then, and that's, and that's also the impetus for ceasing the carry at six o'clock. Number one, that's when we're at dusk, so that's the safest possible situation. But then find that spot for the night, you know, make your, make your way around, see the spot where you wanna be the night, see your friends, where are your friends at and find those locations to then be with them.
Yeah, Parks Direct Director Hobson brings up great points and, and yeah, and I, it's, it's not a, it's not something that I'm going to oppose because of it, I just, I wanted to bring that out because I had spoken to a few establishments about it and, and I think for the most part, it was, it was positive. A couple of them wanted to really get involved and I'm hoping that they're, you know, going down that path real soon for you, because this, yeah, timetable.
Yeah, exactly.
When I look at this, timetable is unbelievable. That's all I have. Thank you. Alden Schaefer?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this event as well and I think the discussion has been excellent. And I also talked to a couple of the owners who had actually contacted me specifically and two things. One, I was glad to see that the times changed to match our other festival events, which I think is key. And going to your point, Alden Santti, I think having, I, I don't see a problem with the, the music or bands go into a certain timeframe. I would hope that those other establishments that wanna have entertainment still do it because it gives all of those people an option, because there may be, there may be a style of music playing in the tent that, that I don't like and now I have, you know, I have options to go to those other establishments. It's, it's kinda, again, getting to that, having that event that's just not specific to one location. It's kind of, if, if you think of the successful events where, say like a Summer Fest in Milwaukee where there's multiple stages, they don't have a problem filling those multiple stages with those options. So I think, I think that, I would hope that those people work with you, Bill, and, and, you know, continue to welcome them to be part of this, you know, from a planning standpoint. And I know you've done a lot to do that already, so hopefully they, they become more of a part of it in this near future and beyond. So I think that's what's gonna give you options for music, it's gonna also give people options for food if they wanna go to a different place for that, assuming that there's not gonna be all kinds of different food sources at that, you know, at that event location either.
So at this point, at that location, I've talked to one, if there was one in particular, and that's Little Chef, and she was really excited about being the food vendor down there, particularly on Saturday. So again, reaching out to those local establishments to try to get them involved.
Sure. So I, I, again, I think the, the things, the issues and concerns that were brought up with the last discussion have been for the most part addressed and look forward to this event and helping out where I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just quick response, Alden Schaefer. Yeah, we, they could bounce around quite easily. I, just, the, the key there is that, I, I mean, it's, it's how your shoulders feel right now, because they're, I mean, it's, it's gonna be interesting to get all this going. And I, I wanna make sure as much as possible, establish a balance over there where, okay, if there is, you know, if, if, if other establishments are still willing to make an extra investment that night to, to bring a band in, you know, and I don't know, there's gotta be a balance to be able to communicate that to the people that are up and down the sidewalks, hopefully the River Walk, and even in the tent area, where they know there's something there, but in essence, it could go somewhere else for a special meal and, and different music. As long as that's communicated as much as we possibly can as this group, you know, with, you know, Kim's heavy duty on this, I'm the president of Downtown Association. As long as, as that, you know, is created and be able to communicate that to as many, you know, hopefully as many hundreds of new people walking around, just, just be able so, so they know, because, so they know where they, where to go. I mean, they, they know, they have options. It's, tent is there, that's great, fantastic, but there are options and, and those, the other options are, are people that have brick and mortar for the most part and I just wanna make sure that, and I, I think, I, I think they will meander and wander on and wander and go to other places. I, you know, I, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it just because I think it's not gonna happen, it is gonna happen. I, I just wanna make sure that this, the information is out just about as fast.
Yeah, that's, that's maybe even where we, I don't know, I'm always open to ideas. So if anybody has ideas of how we best do that throughout our downtown, but maybe there's even the utilization of public spaces, you know, we have a number of parks or River Walk or other spaces that we can also say, here's where, here's the, well, here's the event schedule for the evening, you know? If you do, like in Alden Schaefer's point, if there was a blues band here or whatever type of band that might be, that maybe, we haven't done that in the past with any type of, but maybe this is a good opportunity to again encourage people that are walking down the River Walk or are walking on Green Street or Riverside Drive. We have, we do have kiosks there that are the most notable, so maybe we'd have to do something different, but if there's that option to have some, utilize some public space to be able to advertise some businesses or specials or bands or that entertainment type of thing. Alden McCannan?
Yeah. How long are these bands gonna be, you know? I, I guess, big question is, is you talk beginning of March or middle of March, you know, if you've got clear air, is it gonna carry through on Sunday at twelve o'clock? Do you want a band starting with church services still going on or should we make that like one o'clock on Sunday? Just food for thought.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know, twelve o'clock to the, one o'clock rather than twelve o'clock would make a big difference on Sunday, Saturday might.
Yeah, too. I mean, typically, I tried to marry it really to yesterday's hours and what we do for yesterday's are blues brews and barbecue on a Sunday when we do have events. I think the closest church is probably First United Methodist on Main Street and their service, their last service on Sundays at eleven.
Again, I'm just looking at, I mean, you know, you look at some of the bands that we have for yesterday's and I wouldn't expect them to be quite as loud as that. I mean, you know, late at night, some of the bands I could hear all the way at my house, you know, and that's what a mile away, you know, at least. So just food for thought. Another thing is, is okay, you're gonna close the bridge for three hours on Pearl Street. Is that right? Did I read that right? From, what was it, ten to one was it?
Eleven forty-five to one, so an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay, hour and fifteen minutes. I would think if anything, you're, that's where you're gonna probably find it, you've got your families and everything else. The kids are gonna be excited to look at the green. Everybody else says it's, river's green already, so you know. Transportation. Um, transportation, you know, do we offer some kind of, you know, if there's enough families that want to get in on that, uh, you know, for their kids, is there going to be enough parking in that area?
It is an option that we've talked about, similar to the, again, to the downtown Christmas Walk where the city hires trolleys, um, so, in some of that leeway that I asked for and not to exceed them, uh, it's those type of things as we're developing that event to be able to potentially have trolleys. Uh, from a parking point of view, I have had the conversation with, uh, the superintendent of District One Fifty-Six about utilizing East Campus, um, for parking lot as well. So there's a, a large lot there, um, that we can utilize, but the opportunity to introduce trolleys into the event is also something that is a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, you know, all I can think of is, is okay, how many people are going to just start dumping their cars over at Vicki's place, uh, you know, and, and just because it's right there by the bridge, uh, you know, unfortunately, the owners are going to probably be on her to have to monitor that to some extent, I'm sure we'll try to help, but, you know, you know what I'm saying, and, and you don't want to hamper the businesses if they're there because of the dying of the river either, you know, because that's the whole idea, is to help the businesses, not hurt them, so.
Honestly, that's one of my biggest concerns with the event. Well, a lot of the things I'm really comfortable, all of it I'm really comfortable with, because it's things that we do already. If it's wildly successful and we have to start parking cars, uh, or directing them to parking spots, making sure that we have the capacity to be able to do so, that's convenient and doesn't impact our downtown businesses.
Well, I know, I know you're going to have problems, or not problems, but you're going to have a lot of people, uh, at the park, being along the river, but what about behind all those buildings? I mean, that's all private property and.
For viewing of the dying of the river?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where the prime location was, how we, you know, the best spot was to close off, um, close off the bridge and let it view it from there. Uh, Vicki's Place is very interested in being involved in the event, so that would be, uh, you know, they have a prime location right on the river also. Um, I did speak to Mr. Arcos from Bimbos, and he, he was supportive of the event. So there's, they're on board, obviously, yes, it is private space, and there's going to be, directing people where you want them to go is always a challenge. Weber Park is another spot where people could view it from, so.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, you don't want these crowds, uh, jumping into people's private property along the river, uh, where they assume the liability and everything else. I mean, uh, if they decide that they have no problems with it, it's one thing, but, um, I don't know, I just think, to some extent, a little thought about that before the event, and, uh, looking at what we can do as a city to prevent that from happening would, would be a plus, you know, needless to say, we're promoting the bridge, but there's always a few that have to decide on other things, and you just don't want, you know, things to happen that, uh, deter from the, the, you know, the whole thing in the first place.
We can certainly, you know, that's what, some of those, that will occur with some of the discussions with those business owners, whether that's John Mercredo in his parking lot down there, or Bob Funk and Kevin, and you know, they want that parking lot blocked off, you know, we have steel, steel special on barricades as well as the red and whites that we utilize, we're all over for fiestas, so there's opportunities to make sure that we are having the right impact on our businesses and not, uh, and not in a harmful way.
Well, you know, the onus is, uh, you've got some buildings there that have multiple tenants, and so, uh, who's the onus on, uh, the absentee landlord that, uh, isn't even going to be in town at the time and might not even know what, what's going on, or the, you know, the businesses that are in those buildings?
Sure.
You know, so. That's why I'm saying, I, I just look at, uh, you know, let's just kind of look at, make sure that, uh, we're covering all the, the possibilities, the, the easy possibilities to spot, I mean, you're never going to be a hundred percent, but.
We'll learn a lot from this first one.
I'm sure we will.
I can tell you, I, you know, I, I stand before you, or sit before you and tell you that there's a lot, a lot of unknowns that, that we think we've planned for, but there's things that I'm sure are still going to come up. Um, we, as a group, as a council, have, I feel fortunate to have worked with all of you, and we've approved some things that maybe are outside that box, and I know one in particular that comes to my mind right off the bat, is when we allowed the snowmobile group, the snowmobile water cross group, to have an event out at Peterson Park, and we allowed them to have alcohol and ride snowmobiles on Macomb Lake, and on its face, I still scratch my head and say, I can't believe that we did that, yet it was one of our most successful events for three years running, until that organization, um, just didn't have the money or the volunteers to continue. And so I, you know, I appreciate the, the fact that you allow me to present this to you and, and have this discussion to make sure that it's the best event that we can have for our residents and for our visitors.
Well, we've already got a big start, uh, the council hasn't approved this, and it's all over the place already, so, that it's happening, so.
Yes, I'm aware, sorry.
Yeah, well.
I sent an email to the group to try to.
Word of mouth goes a, a long way when people get excited, you know, what are you going to do? But it's, it's a good indication of, uh, the fact that there are a lot of people that will be looking for this.
At this time, I'll open it up to the public comment. Is there anyone in the public that I'd like to make a public comment at this time?
Yeah, Bill, I got a question.
If you can come up to the podium and say your name to the public record, please.
Yeah, my name is Kerry Kramer, and I just have a question for Bill, and in regards to the live bands, uh, what are the scheduled playtimes for Saturday and Sunday?
We, well, three till eleven, they would end at eleven, so, begin at three, right after the parade, you would have, um, people congregating there after the parade.
Okay.
The bagpipers, and then lead into the, to the live music, uh, but three till eleven, they'd be done out of there by eleven, same as yesterday's. Saturday would be noon to six.
Saturday is noon to six?
Oh, excuse me, Sunday is noon to six, Saturday is three till eleven.
Great, thank you. I have a Sunday place in the band that might possibly be paint, be playing, so I was just interested in the times, you know, so.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you down there.
Uh, yeah, it, it hopes to be a great event, so, I wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Hello, City of McHenry, I'm Phil Sweeney. Thanks for, uh, having this lightly discussion, I appreciate everything that's going into this event. Um, first, uh, I wondered, who's Leroy Walter? Who's, I, I know it's a vast item, but I, I don't know who Leroy Walter is, and he's getting a street name that, so, I'm just curious. The, the second part is.
We'll send you the information.
The second part is, uh, the bagpipe band really needs to start about two o'clock instead of three, just throw that out, because they, it's a very busy day for bagpipers.
We were talking the, the live band with amplified music.
Okay, um, the, uh, tourism budget, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, I didn't know we had one, which is in our tourism budget. This, I'm just curious.
I can't tell you what, what the balance is, we do five percent, we levy on our two hotels or our overnight stays, um, I don't know what that current.
Do we have like a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand?
We have a, uh, four hundred thousand balance in there.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
No more ideas, Phil. Don't do your head right now. Any other public comment? All right, at this time, I'm going to look for a motion to approve, uh, one temporary use permit to allow multiple tents at twelve oh two Riverside Drive, Miller Point, and live music on Saturday, March seventeenth, and Sunday, March eighteenth, two special event liquor license for the sale of beer by the City of McHenry with wine and also malt beverages, uh, three permit, open carry of alcoholic beverages in plastic cups throughout Green Street and Riverside Drive areas, four closure of certain sections of Green Street, Pearl Street, and Riverside Drive from eleven forty-five to approximately one P M for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, uh, five closure of Pearl Street from Riverside Drive to River Road from ten A M to one P M during the dying of the Fox River, and six tourism fund budget amendment not to exceed twenty-five thousand for the, uh, for the McHenry Shamrocks, the Fox event. Alderman Condon?
I will make the motions, just presenting.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Curry?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Click, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Mahefick?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you, counsel. Good work, Phil.
If you do have any comments or hear anything, please, uh, good or bad, I'll hear all the comments, so we can make sure it's the best it can be.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding Lafarge gravel pit agreements. Uh, last week, I met with staff and Alderman Curry, uh, we discussed a number of issues, and I just want to clarify the Skopje Myers petition and related issues. We are discussing, uh, ex- uh, extending the mining conditional uses and amendment of the annexation agreements relating to parcels B through E. Parcel A is, is partially occupied by Myers' tenant, current contracting company, and asphalt, uh, production company. Myers' operational uses from the city's sampling include reclamation plans, cost per ton, noise, hours, and stormwater drainage. Any concerns of the city regarding hours or noise from the current's operation of parcel A, including hours of operation, should be handled separately with current contracting, so, uh, which we will do as, as a staff with direction by council. So, at this time, I'll open it up, we do have Randy Willie and also, uh, Mark Saladin, uh, the attorney for Lafarge. Uh, so at this time, I'll open up the discussion by council. Uh, Randy, if you want to step up to the podium, uh, for any questions that they may have, uh, so at this time, I'll open it up right now. Alderman Curry?
Uh, well, I'll just, you know, I'll start the ball, one, obviously, I've had some, um, interest in this, uh, for some time, ever since really I got elected. Um, I do, you know, I have some, I guess I'll start off with a question, uh, possibly this goes to the city attorney. Um, I, I read through the annexation agreements, um, and I'm, I know that we're saying it doesn't involve parcel A, however, I do note in the current annexation agreement, which has not expired yet, uh, which is ninety-eight dash eight sixty-five, with the attorney, it's page seven, item eleven, one of the things that's mentioned is that it, it talks about stormwater detention, but it indicates it, it encompasses all parcels A through E, and that's an agreement that's signed by parties. So, you know, when we say it doesn't include parcel A, I think these portions of the discussion would include parcel A as well, uh, just what I got out of it. Um, so, but, uh, at any rate, you know, some of the issues that we've had in the neighborhood, neighborhoods around, and of course, do, do revolve around noise, dust, we've talked about some of these in the past, uh, and, and they're not, not all from the asphalt plan or parcel As, in fact, I think the last noise complaint actually came from a new area, well, I don't know if it was the new area, but it was from the south end of the mine. Uh, so we do have, we do have some issues there, not a lot outside, from, from noise from, from the other operations. I think that was probably the case in the past, when Crusher was in a different location, that would have been a lot of years ago, uh, but, uh, it's down in the bottom of the pit now, so it's, uh, less likely to be heard, I guess, is probably the, the statement. Uh, but we've had a number of occurrences over the years with, and again, this does involve, you know, I have to go, I can't, I can't do one without dying about the other, but there's been a number of compliance with hours of operation violations, I concern violations, the official violations where it, it was an actual violation, notice issued, in some cases, yes, um, but in a lot of cases, no, there were, uh, comments that came from residents to the city staff, and in some cases, they were determined, uh, somehow not to be, not to be valid, I guess. Um, I think that one of the things that we need going forward in, in operation is that we need some verifiable method to determine when a startup happens, because it seems like what we're, we're doing is, if, if somebody calls in, even if it's early in the morning, uh, with a complaint, we're, we're, it seems like we're waiting for a, a police officer to go to the site, and if the police officer doesn't see it or hear it, and we're saying there's not a violation, and, at least that's what some of the occurrences in the record are. And, and just for council's, uh, edification, uh, while they may not be the official, uh, city record violations, you received an email from the mayor which outlined what staff has indicated as official violations. I have three pages of stuff from neighbors. I've only been in, I've only been in office for not quite three years yet, and most of this occurred, um, prior to the end of, I'll, I'll say, to the end of two thousand and fifteen, um, and, and I would say that, yes, if, you know, if I go by what I have here, there's been somewhat of an improvement, although I still get the comments. And, uh, you know, when this was coming up, I think, I don't see too many residents here, uh, unfortunately, because I think that they, they should take the opportunity to express their, their views, but the weather might have something to do with that as well. Um, but, we have, again, a number of times that the site, whichever location we want to talk about, has been notified officially or verbally, in one case by, by our attorney, about hours of operation, and the response has always been, gee, we didn't understand that, and therefore we will comply in the future. And the problem that I've got with a manufacturing location, and just for your background, I was a manufacturing guy for thirty-four years, uh, you don't make those kind of mistakes, it's, it's just, it's, it's willful when you, when you start up and run outside the hours that you know you're supposed to, to comply to, so, and they haven't all been asphalt planning, vast majority haven't, I'll say that. Uh, so, so I think we, you know, this is a discussion for what, for concerns that we need to, to take forward to any type of, uh, extension on this, on the, uh, annexation agreement, so, obviously, that's a big concern of mine, um, and I would say that if we do have what I would call a willful thing, which is running outside hours, everybody should know what they got to do, you know, in a, in a location like this, you don't start up outside your hour, you just don't do it. Um, I, I think we need to establish, uh, in the, in the next agreement, some sort of hefty fines, if, if we do it, we, we need to stop saying that this is what it is, because it's, it's apparent what it is, it's always been apparent what it is, and there's just, there's just no, no real excuse for it. Beyond that, um, I, 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 I was a little confused as to what we require today in the current agreement as far as the reclamation bond, but I think one of the concerns I've heard, um, a few times is, you know, because there's been examples of this even in our area, where a gravel pit ends, uh, operation and, and the company, it may not even be your company at that point in time, uh, you know, walks away and, and left with, it's not reclaimed. So I guess I, I don't know what our bond is today, how much it's, it is, or, or what exactly, I was confused reading through over the years, because different, different of the annexation agreements over the years have different requirements. In one case, there was a bond that needed to be put in place every time a new area was started, uh, I believe that requirement was sin preceded, but I'm not real sure where we are now, um, so I guess I can ask that question, does anybody know that?
I can give you my best.
Okay.
Interpretation, again, Randy Willie from Lafarge, formerly Meyer Material. I'm here with Tony Janikis, who's our operations manager, and just several of our Illinois and Missouri operations, uh, so if there's something that you can't answer, we certainly try to find the answer for you, but on the bonding component, I've been around a pretty long time, I think from the city's aspect, there are three one hundred thousand dollar bonds that are constantly evergreen with the city, and they represent three phases of mining. One is when it's opened up, one was when there's operational, and one was when it was restored, and that's how I think that component was built in probably twenty-five years ago, and those are the ones that are issued to the City of McHenry. In addition, since we acquired the operation from the Millers in nineteen eighty-eight, every piece of land that's in parcels B, C, D, and E has received permit, surface mining permit from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. In order to get that permit, we are required to post a bond with the state of Illinois for the length of that permit, and it's not released until the state inspector says the slopes and the vegetation are returned to the state per the requirements. I'm going to tell you, from the D and R standpoint, we probably have maybe three, four hundred thousand dollars. thousand dollars worth of bonds, and actually, some of them are even technically double bonded. I don't know if both the state and the city could get a release at the same time. We've kind of always fought that, because it's kind of silly to pay premiums on an obligation which only one or, one or two can use. So, at this point, I know that for the city's standpoint, it's three one hundred thousand dollar bonds, and I think they're coded as phase one, phase two, and phase three, and they are evergreen, constantly renewable, and until you release them, you'll have those in, in force.
Okay, and does the, so you said there's bonds with the, with the state that don't get released until that particular area is done?
Correct.
Okay. What about at the endpoint? So, at the endpoint, there's got to be a pretty good sized reclamation. I know you're doing the slopes, I was out there with you, and it looks, I mean, I'm not an expert on the slopes, but I mean, it looks like everything is, is being done. But it, but it, you know, I guess there have been examples of others, and again, like I'm saying, I'm not saying that you'd walk away, I'm saying that, you know, it has changed hands, so it could be we're dealing with somebody else in the future, too. Is there, it's got to be a big number, a bigger number than what you're talking about.
I would be happy to give you the phone number for the director of the permit division of the DNR, because the default rate for most agri producers is, is very slim. I don't know about coal miners or other metal mines that might be out there, but I know as an industry, we're slow moving, we restore as we go, it's the most efficient way to mine the property. And then ultimately, where the plant site sits, that's probably going to be the last piece that gets released, because you can't restore it until all of the iron is, is off the site.
Right, right.
But yes, there is a big tail to it, so.
Yeah, I, I guess my point was that, unless I miss my guess, the bottom of the, of the mine is, is going to be to reclaim, you've got to create the, part of the reclamation is creating the lakes at the bottom. I know you already have some.
Yes.
But I mean, actually grading them and that sort of thing in the reclamation plan. So, I got to believe that's the most expensive reclamation at that point in time?
Well, creating the lakes is really part of the mine process, so when you're converting land into water, essentially reclaimed it as.
I'm just saying, to finish up, it just seems like the finish up would be more than each of the individual areas that you're doing. Is that correct or not?
If you mine efficiently, it shouldn't be. You shouldn't wait until the end and have a lot of obligations left when you don't have any reserves to sell.
And you're efficient, right?
We try to be as efficient as we can.
Well, I, I just think it's an issue that needs to be looked at, too.
Our ordinance does, our zoning ordinance does require a bond.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred dollars an acre.
So, I guess the question is, it's on the mouth.
And, and it also, besides that, the surface mining section of the zoning ordinance has substantial requirements for, for reclamation, reclamation plan, and it also has other bonding requirements as well.
Okay, are we reviewing that? You know, I found a statement in the current annexation agreement, again, for our attorney, page nine, number fifteen. It does require a performance bond, and it says at our discretion, the city's discretion, and it says that would be reviewed by Haas every three years.
Correct. It says, it says twenty-five hundred, or at such greater amount as established by the city, the council on a three-year basis.
All right.
That sounds like some good language, by the way.
What's that?
That sounds like some good language.
Did you write that?
Sounds like.
All right. Well, I, I guess what I would ask then is that, that's, we review that, it's part of a new agreement, that, you know, we're, we have enough there, and we're covered. I know we're saying we review it every three years, but it's, when we start off, we need to review that, that requirement. Because I did, I have had a couple of concerns coming out of those neighborhoods about the reclamation, because, you know, eventually, it's going to be a, a neighborhood right beside it, I guess. The other, a couple of, well, several, a few other things. One is, and I, we've talked about this the other day in our meeting, is that, you know, obviously, we need to look at our, at our own future, you know, price per ton issue, so that's an issue before us as far as, as far as what we do coming forward. I, I ran it, I ran the number from the, I think it was the last annexation, one of them, I think it was two, the last five year, two thousand and thirteen forward, and we're a little behind, if you go on inflation rate, where we should be. So, I think that's something that we should look at, and, you know, it could be a lot of different things. We could set numbers, we could tie it to, and one time, there was a portion of it tied to CPIU, actually, I found in one of the annexation agreements. So, it's just something that needs to be considered. Question, are we, again, I couldn't find this particularly, but I believe there is no processing north of Route one twenty?
Not at this time.
But can there be, is the question?
Yes, we have reserves on the north side of Route one twenty.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not talking about your reserve, I'm talking about crushing and spring, and washing, and the equipment.
Only to the extent that we would have to put it on a conveyor belt and take it underneath.
So, it's the same thing you were doing for, okay. So, I mean, but we, in the annexation, as far as I'm aware, the unit can't process on the north.
No, it goes under the road.
I would assume that there is some field crushing unit that would be allowable on the north side in order to put it on the conveyor belt, but otherwise, that's not like a whole set of screens and shakers or anything, it's just to get it conveyable.
Right, I think in answer to your question, I, I'd have to verify, but I don't think there's very specific language that they can do much of anything other than convey it to the south side.
Well, and again, I never even thought about that. It was a concern, it came from a couple of different residents that they didn't really want to see the crushing operation, if you will, or the major noise moving north of one twenty. So, that, that was, that's something that we need to consider. And another one that I never even would really consider until it was brought up to me by some residents, was there are some concerned out there, concerns out there, so this might be just a matter of laying there compared to over water table. In fact, I assume there's been some studies done on that or something over the years.
Water table is.
They're concerned about their, their wells.
Well, I, I, we're mining in a shallow water aquifer, which is fifty to sixty feet below the surface, that's a rainwater aquifer.
Yeah, I know.
Any of the residents are.
Well, for example, you know where, you know where I live, right?
Are you in Martinwick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm not too far, I'm not too far away. My, my well is seventy-five feet deep, so that's, that's all the deeper it is.
Really?
Yeah. So, there are, I don't know what the wells are in Glacier Ridge, Wood Creek, I guess I could find that out, but I don't know what the wells.
They're two hundred feet.
Those, some of those, or, thank you.
Two hundred feet.
Okay.
Because I'm in Wood Creek.
They're two hundred feet, that would make more sense.
Two hundred feet.
Yeah.
All right. That would be below, that would be below where you're at, then. So, we actually, yeah, some other hundred and twenty-five feet of gravel that it filters through is probably.
There's actually a clay seam that runs, you mine down to the clay, then.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, and I was also, and again, this is something that needs to be looked at, that the records that we get for the, the tons produced, it talks about, and again, depending on which one you read, but most of them talk about that we get records of how much sand, how much gravel, how much other materials are actually, so in other words, it's a split off.
Okay.
And I don't know if we get that or not. It sounded to me like, you're talking to our finance director, we basically get a number, but I'm not sure of that.
You get tons sold?
We do not.
You do not?
We do not anymore. We used to get a report, now we receive as a check.
Okay. So, they don't send the backup anymore?
And that written report is still required, by the way. It's an, it was a monthly report with an annual report, and now it's just an annual report.
We do appreciate the turn.
And it has to be examined by.
We'd like some backup today.
It has to be a report that's, that's examined by our CPA, if you have one. A CPA, is that?
Tony was explaining, when we merged two years ago, we're all merging into a software called SAP, and I don't know where the checks originate from, but I guess we would have to probably coordinate.
Checks come from Toronto versus our accounting folks that's in Elmer, so just need to figure out how to bundle that together. Well, again, this, this report, which is now, I think, an annual report, based on what I read, it has to be examined by a CPA.
Correct.
And basically, it's certified, and it's a written report, it shows a total of the, of the tons of the above of the materials, which is again, split out, so sand, gravel, and other earth materials, leaving the properties, the terminology that's in there. And I don't know that we've gotten that report for probably a long time. But that's, no, they, I think the idea of that is that so that there is some verification that, you know, people make mistakes, so there's a verification that the tons match, you know, the, the, basically, the remnants to the city.
I have seen two or three of the more recent audit, annual audit reports, and I think that is now going through our regional office.
Okay. Okay. And I ran across an interesting, you know, just throw this out, because I didn't understand myself, but it could be kind of, kind of interesting for your operation, but several of the annexation permits, and as far as I know, it's still in, in place, but it would have to be researched, it requires that all processing be enclosed in, in enclosed buildings. So, any processing, which, again, I'm a manufacturing guy, you, you take, and I know, I'm not saying that we're going there, but it is a noisy, it can be a noisy situation. You take a front-end loader, you scoop out the rock, and you throw it across the pretty loud shaker, shaker screen at the end of your conveyor, and then it conveys back to the crusher building. Well, that shaker screen is by definition a process, because you are changing the material. So, I think that's something we need to, to look at, but it is, and that is the, the noise complaint that came in in, I think it was May twentieth sixteen, and I think it probably involved that, that screen, but I'm not sure of that, because I didn't see the complaint. But I think that's something that we got to look at. You know, it's frankly, I guess in a general term, and again, this, the noise thing is a problem, it's not because it's a problem all day long, it's a problem because we're waking people up at five o'clock in the morning. I mean, as simple as that. It's just a problem because of the urgency of it.
I'd love to have a copy of the, the three page of complaints, because I've been fairly close to the operation, and I know that in the fall of two thousand and fifteen, we had a couple complaints in Burning Tree, because the winds were out of the northeast for about two weeks while we were stripping, and the stripping crew was a third-party contractor, they hadn't kept the road wet, and the, the dust was going off the site, and I know that generated several. I know earlier in two thousand and sixteen, we had, I think, a, a non-McHenry resident that was complaining about noise, because we reconfigured the plant and the crusher was out in the field farther, even though it's within the boundaries that was allowed. And then I know more recently, this summer, a couple of people in Glacier Ridge were talking about noise before.
Well, again, you're talking about official or validated complaint, and I, I could tell you that we're not tracking all of those, because, like I said, just since I've been involved, there's, there's a lot of back and forth that's going on, and none of all of those have gotten into the record. So, there's a lot more that goes on than what just gets an official, you know, violation that is, for example. So, just trust me when you unite them, I'll, I'll get, I can get with you later, and we'll go through that. But there's, there's just a lot more going on, and there's a lot more complaints. I went to homeowners association meeting last year, I, I mean, they're just, that's the one that, you know.
I missed that.
So, people are not real happy. And of course, what they do is they get tired of complaining, because they, oh, they complained twenty years ago, now it's stopped. So, you know, after you do that few, and most people don't want to complain. Most people don't want the conflict. So, what they do is they complain to their neighbors, and then they think they've complained. You know, I mean, that's really what happens, we all know that. I mean, we all get those different issues, we get those complaints. So, there's a lot more than what we, we have in the record, certainly. I also ran across this, and I, I don't know, maybe you're doing this, too. We had a provision in, in our annexation agreement, ninety dash five sixty, that required topographical survey of the reclamation completions. Every time on an area, like, do we do that? I don't know if we do that.
I, I know that Alan used to meet with Ryan, I think, once a year, but I always thought those are aerials, not topographical.
Aerials are required annually as well.
Okay.
So, anyway, so, I think that covers most of things that we need to be looking at. And I did come across, and, and we had some discussions earlier about what sets the hours of operation, and again, I'm going, I go back to parcel A at this point, and I did come across that, at least the original, the standards were set in our chapter thirteen, section B, which is the surface mining. I never got an answer on that, but I did find it. So, it does set, it does set that, but I'll just say it, a new agreement doesn't have to. It's set, it's set that way because it's in the agreement. It doesn't have to. We, we do not have to set those hours in any of this, at that, at that underlying ordinance, or we can change the ordinance. But we need to do something to address our residents' concerns, regards of all this other stuff, we have, you know, I mean, think about that. If you're, 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 you're in bed, and you're, a lot of those people are not necessarily, some of them are retired people, it doesn't matter, doesn't really matter that they are. But a lot of people, you know, you're in bed, and you're woke up at five o'clock in the morning, and you're woke up every day at five o'clock in the morning, every day that, that operation is. So, think of how you feel about that. So, I just, we got, I'll, I'll stop for a moment and let others, you know, get in there. Thank you.
Mark Saladin?
Yeah, good evening, Mark Saladin, on behalf of Lafarge Meyer. Just one response relative to some of the prior annexation agreements. Most of those have been kind of rolled up into the eighty-eight agreement. So, there's really two annexation agreements that we're dealing with, the nineteen eighty-eight agreement with, which affects parcels B, C, D, and E on the south side of Route one twenty, and then the annexation agreement for the north side. All the other previous annexation agreements really either are, are expired or have been amended into the eighty-eight on the south side.
And yet, the one annexation agreement includes provisions on parcel A?
Well, it includes provisions on parcel A, but that's only relative to the uses on parcel A that affect someone totally different than Meyer Material.
It affects stormwater.
Any other discussion by council, any questions? Sandy?
Oh, yeah, this is a discussion, and first and foremost, thank you very much again, Randy, for, I appreciate the tour, the tour time. I firmly believe that it can be, it is a good neighbor, it can be a very good neighbor, I just want to make it as best as possible between the city and yourself. The bottom line with me is that, and I don't know how this is going to be sought out, because, you know, I'm not going to get into the legalities regards to this, you know, area B, area A. There's a, there's, there's a definite noise issue that, that probably wraps somewhere into an element of operation, time of operation, and, you know, there's a bottom line that I see, and, and something that just, there, there needs to be a resolution in the near future that is agreeable to, to both parties. Alden McCurry brought up fines. I know it's, they're few and far between, the, the official letters that were set up, but, and maybe this doesn't even involve these people over there, but, you know, that we may have to sit down and just have some kind of guideline of, of how we set fines for. for, you know, certain violations, you know, that, that are happening, even when they happen. Performance bonds, I, I understand those now, it makes, it does make sense, that was one of my questions. And I really, really would like to see, it's, it's nice to get a check, but I, I mean, I'd really like to see a report with that, this, you know, what's it for, what's the, you know, timeframe? And there, there should be some type of statement with that in regards to, you know, how far out those, you know, how far out that report is in regards to the timeframe. I'm talking months here, full year. Yeah, I'd really like to have some attachment to, to those checks. And actually, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
And that's something, I know how fast you are getting things done, so-
We'll get to it on that.
Randy will get it done, so.
I understand your frustration.
Alderman Condon?
Just to follow up on what Alderman Sandy was saying, Alderman Curry did bring up several reporting issues. I'm assuming that, that you've conveyed that to staff or, or if not-
Some of them I just, I just, I actually quite frankly discovered in reading through it today.
Okay. So I, I guess my thought would be if you can convey that to mayor and, the mayor and the city administrator, and then they can work with, get, sharing that with you and making sure that, that everything is in compliance, I, I guess I would, things do get slipped through the cracks and if things in the transition, if they weren't conveyed that they needed to be, and, you know, onus on both parties, that we need to make sure we're getting them and they need to make sure that they're sending them to us appropriately. So I think that's great that you were able to uncover some of that, but I, I would suggest that maybe you shared those and writing to our staff and have that in place. I, regardless, this is a question regardless of whether parcel A and covering the, the hours of operation or not, I just had a question. I know for, like, construction hours of operation are, I believe, 7:00 AM, start at 7:00 AM? And so is this considered something, I know it's not really construction, but that pertained to, because of noise, and, and your point being waking people up in the morning. I, I know when, when my subdivision was new and, and the home next door to us, we had somebody at like 6:00 on a Saturday and I went over and had us, and I had sleeping children and I went next door and said, I don't want to cause any trouble, but we can't start yet. And so I certainly can appreciate that. So is the regulation for mining different than construction for hours of operation? I don't know.
Russ, so, so the, the hours of operation for construction do not, they're not applicable here in this instance. The, the parcel A, that's what we're talking about-
Sure.
...is zoned I-1.
Okay.
And it must apply, all the performance standards and the zoning ordinance apply to that. So basically, you know, you can run your business whenever you want to run your business as long as you don't exceed the sound levels and the performance standards and our, and our ordinance.
Okay.
So, you know, that, and that's laid out by decibel level. So it would be, you know, taking readings at whatever time that is started up at to determine, and we've done that in the past, and at no point that I'm aware of have any of those decibel levels exceeded what our standards are.
I do recall in the past getting updates on information that, that, that staff had gone out at different periods of time to record those decibel levels, so I, I do remember that. But I wasn't sure, clear that they were open, could be open 24/7, basically from what you're saying, by legal zoning.
Correct. Correct. I mean, it's no different than a factory that has three or four shifts.
Is that, do you know if, if that is standard for other municipalities as well?
I, I'm not-
Okay, I apologize for asking that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. I could look into that for you.
That, that would be interesting to know, so for future reference. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other discussion by council before I go to the public? Is there anyone from public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item?
Yeah, I would.
Sure. You can come onto the podium, Randy, if you'd like.
In regards to the noise, my wife had tweeted you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, tweet.
And, and, and when you had sent out a tweet regarding, are there any concerns, residents would like to come to the meeting in regards to this noise situation, and she tweeted back and you had properly and promptly responded back to her stating, yeah, the operation can start at 5:00 AM. And there is, they do have that right, you know, and even though I probably do live probably in section A on the closest-
Okay.
... Wood Creek-
Okay.
-where you're mine the last-
Yeah, where we're at that-
Right.
-I talked to some of your homeowners association.
Correct.
Mike Swanson, like-
Yes, yes. So, yeah, I fully understand their situation. I fully understand the city situation. I mean, yeah, we're, we're all here, we're all trying to work together to come to an applicable agreement, you know, because Burning Tree, Martin Woods, Wood Creek, Glacier Ridge, we're all around that area, and I've lived up there for 28 years. So I, I've seen the operation, I've heard the information. So yes, I fully understand. But thank you for the prompt response, Mayor. I hope we can come to an ethical situation so it benefits everyone. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So just council, councils, where I did send out a Facebook post, and I, I did get some responses, actually a lot saying, a lot of people were actually saying that they're, they were happy with the, you know, the way that Randy has worked with them personally, and then some with noise concerns, so, which is what has been discussed here, so it's nothing new, and that's why I really didn't mention it. But yeah, I did reach out and got back to residents that had tweeted me or Facebooked me or emailed me, so, but yeah, so, thank you very much, sir. Any other discussion by council? Not everyone at once. Alderman Condon?
Yeah, I still have one second, just the fact that I was disappointed to see that we're pushing for an annexation, or, I'm sorry, addition as far as time for the northern side of 120. When that was first brought into the council back in, I think, what was it, 98, 99, something like that?
2002.
Was it that late?
Yeah.
When that first came in?
Yeah, it was approved in 2003.
I could've sworn it was the Kuda's regime that we approved that my first term, but anyway, I can just distinctly remember the fact that it was pushed, the idea that in and out, that that was going to be the main emphasis. And I know business-wise, it isn't the veins that you had, well, admired and figured on at the time, and maybe it's a better decision for you as far as leaving that to mind later, but I would have liked to see that done, finished, and get back over to the south side, which was the original intent in the first place. And then to see the big massive estate lots and everything that are supposed to go around the slate, because it'll be interesting. But that's all I got.
Alderman Sandy?
The extension is a request-
By the-
Made by the MP?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a fourth-
What I was trying to do is instead of every three or five years having to come back and prove both sides of the road, I was trying to align them all at one time, knowing that we're going to be there for, in order to mine the north portion, the plant on the south side has to be in operation, so I just thought that might be the smartest thing to do.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Curran, do you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of further comments. First on noise, you know, when I got involved, most of the ones I heard were really from, well, a couple of it around me. And of course, I noticed it and I conveyed that as well. But then I, we get, last year, actually, we had a couple of complaints, I don't even remember now, that were actually in Glacier Ridge on the south side. And then since this has come up, I, I got a couple of responses to email I sent out about noise and, and a couple of, I don't know, two, three people said, well, because I had said, you may be aware that I had said, you know, back when, when Curran put them out, what do you want to call it, the high-tech muffler on the burner, that it had gotten better at my location, and I did thank you for that. I conveyed that to the residents that I sent that to here just recently, and I got, I got some responses that said, well, it's good for you, it's better at your location, but it's worse at ours. And these were coming out of the Wood Creek and Glacier Ridge area, and I, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily, although one did say it's the jet engine sound, so that's, that would be the asphalt plant. But the others, I'm not really sure, they're not talking about the fact that I know you're in the new area, and so you are closer to, and, and, and you're going to be there. I mean, you're, you're closer to those, those homes on, on the west side of Wood Creek. So I, I'm not really positive-
Do they, at what time that would be at? Because we're not allowed to run our field operations before 6:00 AM and we don't. And, and the complaints I had heard over the summer at Glacier Ridge were always 5:00.
Actually, I don't, I don't, on those particular ones. I have gotten, well, as you know, we've gotten, we have gotten comments certainly back in 15, you know, about early startups and-
And running-
And not just early startup. In fact, it's in our record, November 1st is an unconfirmed complaint, however, that was a, our operation on Sunday, that was by the asphalt plant, and the operator admitted that they were running and accepted that and said that, again, it wouldn't happen again. And as far as I know, it hasn't happened on Sunday. But that, to me, that's a confirmed complaint when you, when the person that didn't, you know, actually ran, admitted they ran. And that, that actually was, there was a follow-up, I don't know if it was written or just verbal by our attorney to the, the operator, to where they said, yeah, okay, we won't do it again. So, but, but I, this other, there, there does seem to be a change that, that, you know, we've heard from, and I know Director Polarek has heard from some people too, on the south side on the ways. And again, I know, you know, you minimize it by saying it's a couple of people complaining, but I guarantee you, you, you start talking to people that never made it, never said anything to you, and then you can start hearing it, so, from them. So, you know, I just know it, it's a, it's an issue. And I'm not trying to make trouble for a manufacturing operation, to be honest. I'm trying to best represent people in my ward, because again, I understand, I feel your pain, I understand, I have a manufacturing background. But I do think that starting up loud stuff at 5:00 AM is pretty early for a residence that's next door to you, and you, and you've been, you've been able to do that for four years plus, and I just think that maybe we need to be looking at giving residents a break. So I would propose a 6:00 AM across the board. That would be my, that would be my proposal. It's, it's earlier than the construction standard that Alderman Condon was mentioning, but I think it's a reasonable compromise.
And I'll say that I did call a local plant that's not too far from here that I have a relationship with and asked them what time they, they start their facility, and it's 5:30, but they're a smaller plant, and I told them who we're dealing with here, and they said they, they would need to start earlier because of the trucks that come from the city and so forth, but just, I, I did do some research on, on making some calls to other plants, so.
That was going to be, I guess, to respond, we can open our gates to load trucks at 5:00 AM, but we can't operate in the field at 5:00 AM, we don't start until 6:00. And I guess, getting back to Alderman Condon's questions about construction, we're in the material supply business, so it's imperative that we get trucks through downtown and out the other side before they get caught in traffic so they can get to job sites when the trades are working. So the 5:00 AM loading is pretty sacred in our business. We start in our field at 6:00 AM. Now, where Curran's at, I think they can start at 5:00 AM, but I've talked to Jim Curran recently about it, and they, they make their best efforts to start by 15, 5:20, depending on what they're producing and when it has to get out the gate, because it takes a half an hour for the plant to run.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, sure, come on back up.
Randy, Randy, in regards to the 5:00 AM opening for loading of your trucks?
Mm-hmm.
Do, I've never been in the pit, but do the trucks come to the eastern edge to load? Or is the, is the, or is the gravel?
Well, the stockpiles are, are right up against Route 120, like where our main entrance is, which would be west of the elementary school. So like a half a mile west of the elementary school is where the processing and loading and scales are. That's where they are. And they're against 120, so that's, it's not back in, in the field near Wood Creek. It's probably a half a mile, maybe.
Okay, because I, like I say, in regard, in regards to 5:00 AM, I, I do hear it, so I, it maybe could be the trucks being loaded. It's possible.
I don't know if there, there's any screeching sound, you know, it'd be a low-
If I may, maybe, sure. What your problem, what your problem to hearing most likely is the backup alarms on the front end loaders.
That's possible, yes.
It's okay, but I'd agree with you. And it's pretty, it's pretty piercing and, you know, that is something that, you know, the, the mining cannot, they have to have, it's an MSHA requirement, OSHA requirement, they're under MSHA, so, so, you know, they, they have to have that, so about the only way you're going to eliminate that is you can't run, you can't back them up.
You're right, right, but I was just, I was just more concerned if you had like a conveyor developed that-
Conveyors shouldn't be running at that hour.
Okay.
Strictly loading. But we do have the ability, if there is a beeping complaint, and I did talk to Curran about this as well, they have white noise alarms that you can put that meet MSHA regulations so that when they are in reverse, it's more of a, it's-
Muffler.
Yeah, it's-
It's a muffler.
Audible, it's more of a-
It's audible, but it's not, so piercing.
That might be a good thing to do.
Well, so, can I, can I add to that? Because we had this, we, the beeping alarms in, were a problem. We met, I did, it was before I was a director, but I know that Ryan had met out with some pit personnel, and they have changed some of those alarms to the white noise alarms. In fact, that was one of the complaints, Alderman Curry, that you had forwarded to me today, and that I was trying to still get background on, but the gentleman, I think his name's Mr. White, that was one of his, and if you read, in that email, he talks about how it was fixed. And he was happy with the fix.
Well, I can talk to him again, because my impression in talking to him face-to-face was that it was the, that the noise he was talking about was actually, sounded like it was the asphalt plant he was talking about.
He actually calls out the backup beeping alarms in the email.
So in the complaint itself.
So, what's that? That was the email you forwarded to me?
Well, that was one of, yeah, you're right, you're right. He did.
So I know that we addressed that in like all complaints, I just want to say this too, you know, when we do get complaints, the, you know, Randy and, and the people at the pit, you know, they're, they're very, they're very concerned about the neighbors, and they meet onsite with these neighbors, you know, they do what they can to help them out, and, you know, it's been a good relationship with, with the pit, especially the two years that I've been involved with it and that I've known Randy. I have to say that there aren't issues out there, but I think that we've made some positive steps in, in helping some of those complaints go away.
We did close the operations three years ago on a Friday because one of the Woods Creek residents was having an outdoor wedding, and we wanted to make sure that we got out of their way in order to have the wedding go off on Saturday. We do work with the neighbors as much as we can. We do work with the neighbors as much as we can.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Randy, I just want to say, you know, I've only known you for like seven months, but everything that you've done and stepped up for staff, council members coming and visiting the plant, props to you and your team, and great, great job, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is staff reports. Is there any staff reports tonight? See none? Any mayor, city council comments? I have no mayor comments. Any city council comments? I see none. Motion to adjourn the meeting? Alderman Santi, second?
I will make that motion.
Second? Alderman Devine? Third, please call her.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavish?
Yes.
Alderman Shaper?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good evening. Randy Santi?